All right, it falls to December 19th. Uh, two more meetings to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, just wanted to, first off, Link Epi is calling into this meeting as well, so he is present here. All right, they get a, uh, motion to approve the agenda.
Slow move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, on to comments and suggestions from citizens. Uh, we have a large group here. Uh, later, I'm sure most of you are all here for the recognition part, but if anybody here wants to speak, you get three minutes, and there's also a form online as well. All right. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Slow move.
Second.
All right. Those favor the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now on to the recognition portion of the meeting. Joanie, you want to take care?
Yeah. Um, tonight is a special night because this, we first want to recognize our Lancer Pride Award, and this is an award that the school board has, um, put together and realized it's very important to present, um, on behalf of us, and it's, it's people that, that others can nominate within the district that, um, we have a recognition team that meet on a regular basis, and it's people that go above and beyond in many ways and live the true spirit of the North Scott School District, um, values and mission and values and core values, I should say. And those people are here tonight, and, um, we cannot be even more proud to present it to these three individuals. Um, the first one I'll bring up is Jody. Embry. Jody is so much more than a secretary to our students and staff. She acts as a second mom's grandmother to many of our students, and if you've had students in the building, you know this is true, as I have, and I think most of the board members have had. They know they can go to her for anything. Um, it is about building relationships with the students and the family, families overall, um, with everybody, the staff and so forth. She goes above and beyond in her position to keep our students and sta- and staff safe, cared for, um, she shows that she makes a difference to them. Um, if a student, staff member, or community member is going through a difficult time, Jody is the one that's truly in his trenches for them. She usually is organizing some way to help them. Above and beyond her normal duties, she's working on it to help these students. Whether it's organizing food for a community member, um, cleaning the house of a person going through sickness, or supporting a student going through difficult times, Jody's always leading the way. Um, the way she serves others is a model for all of us to follow, and, well, enjoy your retirement. We don't want you to, but of course, we want you to enjoy your retirement.
I'm Shelby Arrow.
Yeah, that's right. But anyway, we appreciate all you do. I can't, I'm speaking for the whole board on this, so thank you for all you do. There's a, you want to read that, the little thing there, Joe?
Uh, what, what we got?
Honoree, thank you.
Uh, it just says, "Thank you for your positive influence, inspiring, and leaving a lasting impression through your work every day, making a difference in most..."
There's a little pen for you. Thank you, Jody. Yeah. The next, the next honoree is, um, Shelley Wilson. She's here tonight. It's from John Glen. Shelley is an incredible asset to our community and our students, our staff, and our district. She's a model learner, um, who consistently strives to improve her practices. If you go down to John Glen, you walk by, you look in her doorway, she's so engaged, she doesn't even know you're looking in the door for I don't know how long. I mean, not that I'm stalking you, but...
I was gonna say.
No, we like to see what you're doing because you've got such interesting, interactive, um, different modalities that are so fun to see with student, engaging with the students. She cares deeply about her students, and that shows as well. She goes above and beyond to create meaningful and memorable experiences for students, um, through her fun activities. She always has fun activities. She uses student data, um, very often, um, to measure her impact on learning and inform her next steps. She puts in the hard work every day to the kids, and the growth they have made is exceptional. And I know that you collaborate with so many other teachers, um, and other staff members as well, learning from them and new to them. She enthusiastically collaborates. Um, she has an open mind, she's very flexible, collaborative nature, tenacity, we do have that, and passion is very prevalent. Um, one recent example about Shelley is creating a fun learning environment. She transformed her student classroom into Starbucks, um, cafe for students to enjoy a book tasting. Will you, you tell what it is?
Oh, it's when we introduce, um, new titles to the, our class library, and we have Starbucks and hot cocoa, um, because they don't need caffeine, and, um, yeah, they get some cheese kisses, and then they get to go around and make book reviews of all the new, um, reading options for the time.
That's so cute. And, I mean, I wish everybody could see the pictures, it's just so clever. Are they up? Okay, they're up.
That's actually third grade, they just have them as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it was close.
Yeah. And, oh, fun, there's Smith. They have so much fun doing this, and that is you. You thought this up, and how engaging it is, and I bet every student remembers this experience. So, on behalf of the board, everything you do, Shelley, down there with our district, um, you truly live the vision of the district. The third and, um, last recipient tonight is Mr. Scott Campbell. Um, it goes without saying, many things we could say about Scott. He truly lives...
Tell them our printable.
Yeah. He's probably written the mission, and, uh, he's helped so many fundraisers, so many things he's done behind the scenes, people don't realize all that he does behind the scenes. His timeless, I'll come to the script in a minute, but the timeless effort you put in, you're always doing things behind the scenes, as I stated, and your own time often, um, as we know. But we're truly blessed to have him tell our stories all these years to, through the, or Scott Press. How many of us have read it and were crying before we're done with his articles? I mean, it's like, this is what brings our community together, is knowing what families are going through and how we help each other. Many articles, as many of us know, after we read it, we didn't realize this was maybe going on, and we reach out because we find, we didn't know this family or this person's going through it. So, we appreciate that, Scott. Amount of hours, as I stated earlier, is, he invests in attending, traveling to and from events, um, he did in his career, it's hard to comprehend. Um, we can never thank you enough for the coverage of the North Scott community, how you've made us all a family, and how you've made us all better for it. So, we're not gonna let you leave Eldridge. So, and, and I have to say, you also, I said fundraising, but you volunteered, and you always volunteer, for the Yes Referendum Committees, and lots of your impact helped get these referendums pushed through, passed through, and people believed in them because of you. So, we thank you for that, and the many years you've served on the board of the foundation, Education Foundation, which to us is very, oh, we can't say enough about it, and thank you for all your time and effort there. So, do enjoy your retirement, and you definitely deserve the downtime.
Thank you, Joanie, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. All right, anybody?
Scott knows the drill. He's the, he's the one I tell my...
Now, I do have some board members that might want to say something to all of you, so...
I, I do want to add, all three of you folks really do make a difference. With Jody, she knew whether to give a hug or kick you in the butt. She really did, and that, that is a special person, as you enter the school, that can judge that and know exactly where you need to stand, and, uh, definitely made a difference. Scott, invaluable. Uh, you, you have shaped North Scott and made North Scott what it is through your writing and through us seeing through your writing. It's just valuable. And Shelley, I, I can't say enough of how, how strong of a teacher you are, how, how much of a leader you are, and a fantastic job, each and every day, and you're there each and every day making a difference. So, thank you to all three of you.
Thank you, Joanie.
Yes, anybody else?
Yeah, um, I feel lucky to have known all three of you in different areas of my life, different times, and currently, and I just feel very lucky that you've all been a part of North Scott, and I feel lucky to know you, and thank you for all that you've done for everybody.
Thanks, Tracy.
I'll add, I'll try to keep it short. Um, I knew Jody when she actually was a student at North Scott High School, and, uh, had the pleasure of working for her for my last 21 years, and, uh, John, you're right, uh, she knew whether to give you a hug or kick you in the butt, and it goes for adults as well, so, uh, I think the high school will definitely miss her, uh, her humor, uh, her announcements, of course. She does it in a number of different languages. Most are, I guess you can understand them, but she, she enjoys it. Uh, Shelley, what you do down in Princeton with those kiddos, uh, phenomenal, and I think we've already said that, uh, the, this is something the kids will always remember, and when they go on, it's gonna be something they'll, they'll be able to come back when they graduate, I'll guarantee you, they're gonna come back. And Scott, I, I gave you a little kudos, uh, when I found out you were retiring, and, uh, I know I sat down with you several times and, and talked to you about issues and, and things, and, um, I, I still remember, when I say off the record, he was off the record, and you knew that he was one that he'd understand, he'd listen to you, but never wrote about it. Now, he may come back and ask you a couple more questions about what was going to be said, but, uh, you, I think we've already said it, uh, you have made the North Scott community really what it is, uh, and it is a family situation, and a lot of it has to go to you, so, had to talk to you, and hopefully you get to play a little bit more pickleball.
Yeah, that too. Um, okay.
I just, I guess, kind of inheriting this from Joanie, she's easy to start this, but, you know, I appreciate all that you do, all retirees or anybody like that works for North Scott, like, being an outsider in a group in Illinois and have been in the community since 2012, like, this is what I wanted to, when I moved to this community, growing up in a small rural farming town, like, this is exactly why we moved here and grew in, is for people like you that make this community very welcoming and everything else, so, um, I appreciate it, and I'm gonna steal what Michael Klein's comment was, from, go from good to great, it's because of you that we're on that path, so, thank you very much.
Good work. All right. Well, you don't, part of your, did you want to say?
Just thank you, the three of you, Jody, I'm sorry, I won't be able to call, and if you have voice, we'll message you. Shoot me a text, I'll still...
I'll be able to sell number, you can call her, so.
She won't care, right?
Now, you're being rewarded tonight, so you don't have to stay to go to the board meeting. As you would want to, you might want to, but thank, thank you from the bottom of our hearts here at North Scott for all that you've three have done, and do.
Thank you.
And do. All right. Tonight, we have another very special group to recognize, it's our transportation group, and, uh, obviously our bus drivers, and we really do have a soft spot in our hearts for the bus drivers, because we do know what you do behind the scenes and what you do. You're the first people your students see, many ti- many of you, and the last they see. And I know when I asked my two kiddos, when they, um, after they graduated, who is your favorite teacher at North Scott? Carol Rowe and, um, Sue, Sue, um, McGraw. And, uh, well, they're not, they're bus drivers, those are our favorites, and because the fact that they were with them so much, and, of course, I took this school a lot at the, at the beginning of elementary, but they, they had a soft spot in their heart for you guys because you do a lot for our kids. You help build your self-esteem, you're more than a bus driver, and we all know this, we all know this, what you do is phenomenal to our district. We thank you enough, we can't thank you enough, but we thank you deeply.
Joanie, I would, I would add, a lot of people don't know if they're watching, our neighboring districts all value you, because how many times have we had to take our neighboring district's kids to events if it wasn't because of the atmosphere that we have with bus drivers? People are dedicated to our district, the neighboring districts over the last few years have benefited from that, so, and that's up and above what we have to do, and so, we thank you for that, too.
It's just such a good warm feeling when you drive by and you see our bus drivers driving by, you know? I'm the crazy one waving at you, I know, but, um, I don't know, you guys are the best. Anybody else?
Could we have them stand up and just introduce themselves?
Yes, and I have their words.
And I assume, well, maybe we'll take them to the room as they leave, and you can, you can hand them, uh, they can get their, their certificate and...
And the shirts are in the room right now.
A lot of...
Let's give them a...
You gotta wait till somebody wears them.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We'll get them in the room for you guys, but if you would stand up and introduce yourselves, uh, that would be awesome. I guess I don't, that you have a...
Dave Serson.
Dave?
Bus 40.
I was just gonna say, I really appreciate it, too. I know by a bus number.
Yes, well, then, we want a picture out there, Katie's gonna take a picture, but, and you'll get your certificate and your T-shirt.
Katie, you wanna get a picture up here, or do you want...
Yeah, let's get a picture up here.
Yeah, come on up here. And we'll do it one at a time.
Just like, get me out of here.
Well, not a picture one at a time, and you introduce yourself, come on up.
I'm John Thier, I'm bus number one. I drive Grissom. I got 11 five-year-olds in my bus, and I'm never bored.
I like that.
As an al- just as a top of thing here, I leave my, the bus bar at 6:55 in the morning. If any of you ever want to be on, want to ride a school bus, come on, join me. I'll, I'll have you back by about 8:30. I'm running a propane bus, just, it's, it's an interesting process to see. So, like I said, I'm bus number one, 6:55, I leave down there, if you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm Dan O'Flaherty, and I drive bus number 23, Michael Jordan's number.
Does it jump as high?
It goes fast.
And, and I think I can probably speak for all the bus drivers in saying that we really appreciate being appreciated. Uh, it's, I think you go across the United States and maybe find a dozen school districts that is supported, that supports their bus drivers the way our board does, our superintendent does, and it didn't always used to be that way. So, as a person that's been on both sides of that, I really appreciate all that, that we do together. It's so valuable for our whole district.
That's true. Thank you very much.
I'm Craig Whipple, and I drive bus 22, and I drive junior high and high school from kind of Leclerc Road down to Mount Joy, that old corner down there, and I love my kids.
Aw, they love you.
Also not ever bored. You're also not ever bored.
No, Wes for sure.
Wow, thank you.
John Olson, I drive bus 50. I drew McLaughlin into the high school in junior high, but for six years, I did Rustic Bridge and had Mark's kids. They all got to know me, I got to know them, and enjoyed it every day.
Thank you very much.
I, like Dan, have said, you know, appreciate being appreciated. You come to our lunches, and, you know, it's just great, uh, work here, and, you know, and do your job.
Well, you guys are good cooks, why wouldn't we?
Well, we have some, we're giving some pretty good food.
Yes.
I'm Dory Townsend, I have the junior high and high school out of Parkview. Fun times mostly. Um, I am also a third generation in my family to drive bus for North Scott. My grandpa did a long time ago, my mom did, and following me is my daughter, so, thank you for appreciating us.
Wonderful story. Thank you.
I'm Nicole, I drive out of Parkview in bus number 12, and I have junior high and high school kids, which 90% of them are taller than me.
Oh, thank you.
And I have a bus driver in trade.
The fifth generation.
I'm Rod Weiss, I'm probably one of the newer bus drivers, and I have to say, I first drove school bus back 40 years ago before we moved here to Eldridge. It's a world of difference now to back when I drove school bus there, and I, I can't appreciate, or say how much I appreciate the way that, uh, the equipment and the facility and everybody provides for us as bus drivers. I drive bus number 47, John Olson's old route, Parkview, or, uh, Rustic Ridge, and then I have a few out in the country.
Good, thank you.
Thanks for choosing us. Do we make friends?
David for a lot. Uh, bus 24, and I service Allen Shepherd. Um, you know, when you're in public and you, and, and they ask you, "What do you do?", and you say, "Oh, I'm a bus driver", and the reaction that you get is, "Oh, man, oh, that's all right." But it's, it's, it's nice to be able to say, you know, "I drive an elementary route." They get on the bus in the morning, and they have smiles on their faces, and they get on in the afternoon, and they have smiles on their faces, so, can't beat that.
Yeah, thank you.
And my name is Deb Lowe, I also drive for Allen Shepherd. Never saw myself as being a bus driver, but I'm really glad I did.
We are too, Deb. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Skinner, I drive bus 15 and bus 45. I'm a special needs bus driver, and I drive preschool, and, I don't know what else to say.
That's funny.
Kids are a lot of fun. If you've seen me walking around kind of like this, I'm probably just about dead and driving.
Oh, thank you.
Can I just add before we're done? It's, I, I want to piggyback off what Dave said. We have very, very good kids at North Scott. I don't have to tell you folks that, I know, but just to reiterate that, it's, it's easy to drive bus at North Scott because of our kids. It's not like what you hear some of these horror stories.
Yeah.
Exactly right.
And we don't hardly ever give up our routes, like...
No, once you get it, you...
Once you get it, we're, we're like lifers with those routes, because those kids depend on us, and we just...
I know.
And they can ask anyone, but who's got the best belt, and then we'll say the same.
Wait, are we talking time-wise? I don't know if that's time-wise.
Oh, you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, we gotta get a picture now.
Yeah, Derek, you want to say?
Where's Derek? Oh, there's Derek.
I'm just so grateful for each and every one of them, because getting into this job then make it pretty easy. It's enjoyable.
Good, Derek.
Can we make maybe two rows?
Well, let us know when you're ever in the potluck again. Derek. One, two, three. Perfect.
I also want to say thank you to you all. It's appreciate, I appreciate being invited to your, your get-togethers, and it's, it's been great to get to know you all. I, I think it's, uh, making it into a family affair of bus drivers and, and community is just a wonderful thing, so, thank you for really being the first thing in the morning and the last thing for our kids. Thank you very much.
I'm just gonna add one more thing. So, I know you've been through a lot, because you are a family, and when Luann left, I'm sure that was difficult. Derek's been wonderful, and then I know you've also had some loss amongst your family, and that's hard, and, and we feel for all of you, and know that we send our support, and we always wish you guys well, because you're amazing, so, thank you.
And showing how good a bus driver is, we've had two retirees come back, and a soft certificate.
That's awesome.
So, thank you. They're gonna give you a certificate out there, and then a T-shirt, uh, they have a T-shirt out there, too. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with recognition.
to them. Know the individuals, it's kind of different, they do it on their own, but I think five of them have individuals, too, so, congratulations to the dance team, great state. The next is the Iowa State Thesbian Festival. Um, they, uh, 739, could not be prouder of the hard work and success they've had in their 2022 Iowa Thesbian Festival. 13 thespian performances and 12 tech challenge teams. Uh, 22, 23 state officer in communication, Hannah Nune, Michael Peets, Thesbian leadership award, Grace Hammond, uh, first place monologue, Michael Kente, third place solo theater, Gabby Anderson, third place duet acting, Keegan Panther and Lauren Polowski, second place group acting, Michael Kente, Thomas McCarthy, and Grace Hammond, first place leg, uh, lega platform, Michael Kente and Ryan Stickler, first place light, ham, and focus, Hope Harrison, first place overall tech challenge, Michael Kente, Ryan Stickler, Hope Harrison, Avery Kelly, Aiden Kelsey, Nora Glover, and Evan Rubin, and international qualifiers, Mike Kente, Grace Hammond, Thomas McCarthy, Avon Hagdorn, Gabby Anderson, and, uh, Ryan, or is it Raina Latcher? Congratulations to all of them. And our North Scott Junior High Lego team qualified for the state competition, so congratulations to them. A lot, a lot more success.
All right, uh, next, we're moving on to the bills. Jill?
Thank you. Um, this evening, I have $965,109 of bills presented for approval for payment. Uh, the items I have to highlight include a payment to ABC Company, Supply Company, for $7,357, that is for siding supplies for the student home, a payment to SHI International Corp. for $10,634 for 29 new district whiteboards, and lastly, a payment to Pro Circular, um, for $7,800, and that is for a cyber incident review plan development and exercise. Thank you.
It's a one-stop shop there.
All kinds of stuff, yeah.
All right, uh, motion to approve bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Uh, we do not have any committee reports, correct?
No.
All right, moving on to administrative updates. Um, before we kind of get going through these, I just want to thank everybody for taking the time to, uh, write all of your goings-on and your, uh, board documents attached to this, so if you just, as you're going through, just give like a, one highlight for today, or if something's not in there, just pass that on, so, so. Uh, we'll start with, uh, we have curriculum, you, Bernie?
Yep. Um, I'll just mention something that's not in there. Um, last year, we talked about vertical alignment and starting that process in our district. Um, we started with math as our big focus for our core areas, and today, we wrapped up our last round of vertical conversations with sixth through ninth grade teachers. So, now, um, that work will go into a subcommittee, and we're excited about what's to come. Um, and we're also doing some preliminary planning for ELA vertical alignment. Um, we'll be laying the foundation work for that this spring, and some conversations, and the work starting in grade level bands next fall. We're chugging along, it's good work. Teachers are working hard.
Very good.
Heather, anything in the special?
Um, we got our, like, designations from the state back in special, and our preschool scored extremely high on our gold standards, which is their assessment, so that's new, and just, uh, look at that, so, proud of that.
Joe?
Thank you.
All right, I gotta recognize our Lego League team. Um, you already said that they made the state tournament, they're known as LIGHTS, Lancer Innovations Global High Voltage Transport Solution. Say that 10 times. Yeah, right? I'd write it down. Um, and also, our coach, Nicole Pilcher, got the Coach Mentor Award, and she won that because the team, um, wrote up a little, uh, paragraph about her and why she's such, um, so important to the team, so she won that, and then I just wanted to give a shout out to some community, uh, folks that helped us out, Alan Bettonsdal, and Aaron Griesenbeck, and Cora Van Orsdel, um, helped the students. So, they came up with a great idea of a mobile power station, and they went and presented, and now they're going to the state tournament on January 16.
So, they came up with a great idea of a mobile power station, and they went and presented, and now they're going to the state tournament on January twenty-seventh. Then looking forward to it.
One thing I'll add is, today, we had our Lego League showcase, which I mentioned on there that we were having it, but a really good turnout, got a chance to recognize some kids. On our Facebook page, we'll put up some pictures tomorrow of the award ceremony, all the kids. We had seven teams, and they all had a chance to present their work that they did, and I was impressed, the kids did a really nice job.
Some of the cool things that we've had over at Grissom, just some kind of nice community ones. Our student council did their blanket drive, which was something new this year. They were trying to think of something different that they could be doing to help out. So, they collected over seventy-six blankets in this type of year. That's something that they found is, you know, really needed in the communities. And so, I thought that was really cool that our student council did some research to find, you know, something different that they could be doing to support. And then just our kindness tree that's in our, our lunchroom right now. They're just looking for different things that they see around the building that, you know, acts of kindness and wanted to recognize students for that. So, they're starting to really grow that tree in our, in our lunchroom right now, which is pretty cool.
And at Ed White, we just tied it right into what Kyle was talking about. Last week, we had a random act of kindness week. It's a playoff Christmas, it was kindness. During blastoff, each classroom brainstormed different random acts of kindness that they could participate in. And then, when the students performed one of those random acts, they got to color in the light bulb on the, did a paper with string of lights that they got to color in. Pretty cool.
We have something similar going on at John Glenn. I don't know if our teachers got together.
It's like you guys talking.
I mean, one of my teachers just, the trees just showed up one day, and everybody got these lights, and they were like, what's going on now? So, one thing that I have to highlight is obviously Grandparents' Day. So, this was my very first one in the traditional format, and it was everything that I've heard of. So, we had over three hundred grandparents there, and just the smiles, and you could feel it. It was awesome. People were very complimentary and appreciative, and it was really nice to have everybody in the building together. And then one thing that I didn't mention, our building has really been working hard to make some shifts. As the school itself has kind of lost a section every year, the ways in which we collaborate with one another have shifted. And one of the things that we have started doing differently is how we collaborate with our students who are receiving interventions. And we have a lot of students receiving different services. And we did our first round of that last month in November, and I'm just really proud of getting more people around the table to focus on the kids from a holistic perspective, and the staff is really excited about it, too. So, I'm proud of us for that.
Neil Armstrong, just want to highlight the, kind of the same thing that Chad had down there, our Lego League. They participated in Dubuque, and they were awarded the Breakthrough Award, and that, that award recognizes that learning is more important than winning. And I think that just goes back and attributes to our teachers and our counselors going into the classroom and working with those kids. And hey, we've all experienced it. You're not always going to be successful right away, but do you have that grit, determination to keep working and keep persevering? And those, those attributes pay dividends in that tournament for them. Their, their model didn't work exactly how it was anticipated, but they made adjustments and made some changes, and they kept getting better and better every time. And I think as students, that's what we want from our kids, to continually get better and better as they engage in their work.
Mr. Kanaki's on the other side, so he's not able to be here.
Any other questions for?
Just thank you, you guys.
Yes, thank you.
I know it wasn't in there, but Chad, the concert was really great. The Submaniac concert was quick, very good. I did a nice job.
I would piggyback on that, too. Molly, it just amazes me how much growth you see from like seventh grade and then eighth grade, not only just like with voices, but just like, it's like I forget how much my kids grow from one year to the next, you know, just seeing them right side by side there. So, great work by the music staff. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to old business. Jill?
Okay, the policies are in there from the last board meeting. I went through them at the last board meeting, there were no questions, so tonight, I'm, I'm looking for a motion to approve policies as presented.
We'll get through.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of them, is there any discussion on those? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, moving on to the school infrastructure sales. So, just for everybody's awareness, there's more roll call votes we have to do, so just your word.
Jill will handle this one.
So, Joe doesn't read all hundred things.
I read them all last week.
Thanks.
Yeah, we're not reading them all.
No. No, so, yeah, like you said, we have, I have one item attached to the agenda. There's four separate roll call motions, so I'm going to introduce and summarize each one, and then I'll ask for a motion, and we'll go through all four of them like that, if that's okay. So, the first one is a resolution appointing U M B Bank, N A of West Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, and authorizing the execution of the same. So, to summarize, these services are necessary to be in compliance with rules and regulations and requirements governing the registration, transfer, and payment of the bonds, and to provide for the maintenance of the records, registration of the bonds, and payment of the principal and interest. They currently are doing this for the bonds that we currently have, just so you are aware. All of this is very similar for the last two issues as to a current issue. So, this evening, I'm asking for approval of this board resolution.
So move.
Second.
All right, is there any, you got a motion, a second, is there any discussion on this? Okay, there are none, let's do roll call vote.
Would I?
Maxwell, aye.
Deemer, aye.
Burkhell, aye.
Lyndon, an aye.
Pratt, aye.
Glenn.
Kepi, aye.
Great, motion passes. Moving on to the tax exemptions.
So, this is an important document, outlines the covenants and obligations of the district. It's based part upon the fact that the district will use the bond proceeds to benefit the public and will not be sold. The bonds will be for construction for the items we've outlined in previous resolutions. It talks about how the bonds must be spent down, so we don't have tax implications. Outlines investment restrictions, and really just a number of other general promises that the districts will be made, that the district, general promises by the district. Also, similar to the current bonds that we have, I work closely with P M M and the inter, or P F M and the attorney, and if I have any questions or anything pops up during the year, I will reach out to them to make sure we're in compliance. So, this evening, I'm asking for board approval of the tax exemption certificate, and that it be placed on file and approved.
Make that motion.
Second.
All right, you got a motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, I think so. Okay, roll call vote?
Would I?
Maxwell, aye.
Deemer, aye.
Burkhell, aye.
Lyndon, an aye.
Pratt, aye.
Glenn. Aye.
Kepi, aye.
All right, moving on to the wire transfer agreement.
Yep, the third item is the wire transfer agreement. It was an interesting one, to me anyways. It's an agreement between North Scott Community School District and Truist Bank, and it outlines how the advance of the twenty million dollars will be handled from them to us. It will take place, and in order to prevent unauthorized or fraudulent wire transfers through cyber fraud and other means, it includes, but is not limited to, wire transfer requirements, verification procedures, and payee identification. So, this evening, I'm asking for board approval of the wire transfer agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, any discussion? Just have a question on that, Jill. What is the timing of that wire, actual wire transfer?
Closing is on the thirteenth, and we'll get our funds one day following on the fourteenth, and I will be the one on the phone with all the other parties, making sure that takes place and watching it in our bank. Yeah.
All right, roll call vote?
Would I?
Maxwell, aye.
Deemer, aye.
Burkhell, aye.
Lyndon, an aye.
Pratt, aye.
Glenn.
Kepi, aye.
Okay, now moving on to the, another resolution for the terms.
In summary, this resolution states that the district is entitled to receive proceeds from the statewide sales, services, and use tax for school infrastructure, that the taxes will continue to be collected. The district held the required hearing that we had to November fourteenth, and we did not receive a petition requesting an election on issuing the bonds. That the bond proceeds will be spent on items that we previously talked about, all of our projects. P F M did do a costing, and so there's, you know, within that, we have the ability to repay the bonds. And the tax revenues will be first lien. It's not a general obligation of the debt, it is the sales tax revenues. And then, I mean, there's a lot more in there. I guess these are the things I pulled out that are to highlight. But then, that the principal amount is the twenty million dollars. The interest rate is the three point seven eight that we locked in at the last board meeting. The bonds mature twenty forty-two, and principal, I'm sorry, interest payments begin June first, twenty twenty-three, and then they'll be due semi-annually after that. So, this evening, for this one, I'm asking for board approval of the resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of the twenty million dollar school infrastructure, sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-three, for North Scott Community School District, State of Iowa, under provisions of chapter four twenty-three F of Dakota of Iowa, for fighting for a method of payment of the bonds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussions?
Now, is this resolution, Jill? This is clearly spelled out, isn't it? The steps of the accountability.
It, it, it really is, and it's a, it's a template, too. I mean, over the years of my career, I've read the blocks of them, and I reviewed it, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, roll call vote?
Would I?
Maxwell, aye.
Deemer, aye.
Burkhell, aye.
Lyndon, an aye.
Pratt, aye.
Glenn.
Kepi, aye.
All the, you have to start money, Jill.
Thank you.
That's a big deal.
It is a big deal. It's exciting. It's exciting.
Yeah, very exciting. All right, moving on to new business. Jill, you want to do the early graduate?
So, the early graduate list is in part of the board packet. There are six students who have met the requirements, and we recommend to allow them to graduate early, so a motion to approve is recommended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the early graduate list? Okay, all those in favor of the motion for the early graduates?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, and then now, I'm moving on to the school calendar draft. So, purpose of this is just, you're looking for approval to set the hearing date.
Correct, yeah. So, we presented the calendar as part of my report a month or so ago, and then now it's time to set our public hearing. All calendars are required to have a public hearing. So, we're asking approval for January twenty-third board meeting to have a public hearing on this calendar.
Motion to set the hearing date.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the calendar? It's, I guess, for...
Jill, is this comparable to most of the other districts?
It is. It's comparable to, within range of the Quad Cities and a number of the Clinton County schools now. It's the same spring break as E I C C. We do alignment that. There's only one or two districts that don't do spring breaks anymore, between Clinton and Scott County. There's going to be a few differences on maybe less days at Christmas. Somebody may have taken a fall break, but in general, it's the same calendar we've had, consistent since I've been here. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, those in favor of the motion to approve the hearing date?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Great, moving on to the Allen Shepherd bid timeline.
So, included in your packet is the, the bid timeline. We're looking at going out on the twenty-second to bid through the eighteenth. We'll open the bids on the eighteenth. They'll, they'll do the bid review between the nineteenth and twenty-third, and we'll be presenting to the board the Allen Shepherd bids on the twenty-third. And so, tonight, it's just a motion to approve the timeline.
So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Jill, does it, have you heard, do they feel that we're going to have a good quantity of bids? Different builders, contractors bidding on this, or are we going to?
Yeah, no, they will, but it, it all depends, too. You know, we'll talk about the bits coming up on the softball. There were two, two, I think, two of them, where only we got one bid, but yet we had multiple people say they were going to bid. So, you just never can tell. Obviously, the softball field, you guys know, came in less than the last time we projected it, so things look good in that sense. I think they, Russell feels comfortable going out in this, in this timeframe.
Okay. Any other discussion? So, I guess, for me, Joe, on this, once we get, kind of that, the bids come back, maybe we'll have the idea of the timeline then for, like, construction.
Correct. Well, look, if, if, obviously, we approve the bids, it's when the frost gets out, we'll start, start going. I was one of the questions earlier today about the softball. When those, both of these projects have areas where they don't interfere with our school at all, so they can get started and do a lot of the work on that. And so, with this project, the biggest, the biggest thing we all know is our electrical panels and the transformer. Is, is going to be, anything electrical like that, is it just a big question mark right now, so.
One thing you would ask, since it's happened so much, is that supply is available?
Yeah, that's the electrical panels. Yes, they do. They know which ones are. They wanted us to, a couple of months ago, to try to order those stuff. We weren't never planning on using it until the following school year anyway, and it was hard to commit a hundred and some thousand dollars before you even knew for sure. I mean, what happens if the bids came in four million over? We'd be, we'd be, we might have a panel in no project, so we just won't go on the gamble at that, at that point, so.
We like the project and no panels, but...
Yeah. If, if we work tight, now, the junior high project, a year from now, will be totally different. We have a really short window. We need the space, so we have to get it done between the end of school year and the beginning of the next school year. So, that'll be a much different situation than these, because these, we don't necessarily, they're not going to interfere with us operating like we want to build up, so.
Right.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve Allen Shepherd bid timeline? Say aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed? Okay, bid timeline passes. All right, moving on to the softball complex bid results. So, we will, kind of, if you remember the auditory one, and I think probably the shed or whatever it's called now, we had to approve each trade, so we'll have to do that on this one.
So, I asked for a motion for each one of them, because we're the, we're the, we have a C M, and when the C M, that means we handle the individual contracts, versus like the Y. That was just one bid. Russell bid the whole thing, and all the packages fell under Russell in that case. In this case, Bill's our C M, but the package is still with us. Now, they work with us on the billing and all that stuff, but that's, that's how it operates.
That's coming down the line, not tonight.
That's going tonight for softball. That's for softball tonight.
So, each big package right now?
Yes, so, yeah.
Sounds like a fire.
Yeah. So, included in your packet is the letter from Bruce Construction that breaks it down to who the winning was. Earlier today, I also sent you out the total bid spreadsheet. So, the first bid package was the site work, and that was awarded to Niedermex Abating out of Walcott for a total of four hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I guess.
Motion to approve?
I guess before we get into the, do all these, is there any general questions that we have for bills, for these, before we get through approving all these?
I just wonder, so I see a bid for turf. Turf, is that just on infield, or?
So, that has, that's the natural grass, but it's basically above the geogrid on the softball field, and then that's landscaping, and it's the seating around the learning tube.
Thank you.
Any others have anything?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to look at the stuff that was sent out this morning, so can you tell us which ones, they only had one bid on that? Maybe as we go through them, how many bids we had?
Yeah, so there was seventeen total bids, and the general trades had one bid, and the turf package had one bid.
Do you have, I guess, do you have any concerns or anything else about the lack of any bids or anything like that? Or do you have, I mean, with the team you have going forward, are you confident that?
Yeah. So, we, first builders along with legged architects, before we sent this out, we went through with each bid package and each bidder to make... and each bidder to make sure they had the scope that we, want to make sure they're all confident in that. And, uh, a lot of these contractors we've worked with in the past, they're, they're solid contractors.
Because, what, because of the fewer numbers of bidding, um, are, do you feel they're going to follow the timeline really well? Like, because they're busy and they have other, uh, responsibilities with other projects, are we going to be?
So our, our critical, uh, I don't, I don't believe so. Our, our critical path is through the softball field itself. So we want to make sure that we get the, the grass going this late summer fall, so we get one window of grass on there. And then, um, our press box is going to be a little bit later, but that's just due to, um, getting a here and time of material. So I think they're telling us late, late fall for the, the press box, but to be able to play softball in the next year, um, for seating issues.
Thank you.
So that was one of the questions I asked, because Bruce Builders got the, uh, general trades, I guess they're right?
Yeah.
Uh, but we were anticipating two other bids, some two local ones. So in the time, now why they chose not to bid, I have no idea, um, for that. But we would have anticipated for that one, so local contractors that would have bid in, and then again, they didn't turn a bid in. It indicated all the way up until right before bid day. I mean, well, obviously, there's no indication why not. But the, the, due to conversations, we assumed there were bids coming in and they just didn't come in. So it could have been they got another job that busy or whatever it might have been. I don't know that answer.
We don't ever follow, because we've got commercial projects to bid, right? We don't ever follow up and then those that don't?
No, yeah. And they didn't reach out. Typically, if it would have been, I, it wouldn't have ended, it wouldn't surprise me if they were local and said, hey, there was no way we could bid against, uh, Bruce Builders, you know, we've had in the past where it's like, well, of course, we're not going to bid against Russell or, or Bush because they, they're so big. And it'd be nice if you could break down projects a little bit smaller. Nobody contacted me on anything like that.
So you, let me ask this question, too. So because we only had maybe one bid, do you feel like we're being short-changed? Do you feel like we're really going to get what we need, or is it, we're just settling?
No, I don't feel you're settling at all.
Okay.
No. You know, and, and like the turf, for instance, it's, it's a specialty trade, too, so there's not a lot of turf contractors, you know?
And another example is the lighting. We went with the state, we, we purchased the lighting ourselves because the state has a, a already an agreed pricing through Musco. And we want Musco. Musco is everything that we have. Uh, same with the scoreboard. We want, we wanted the scoreboard that matches all of our scoreboards so we can grab a controller and bring it over and do those things. So we bought that specifically through a state buy ourselves, because we didn't want to leave it up to a bowl bidder in a bid process. Because then you might end up with a lighting system you've never worked with and, and never had, and/or a scoreboard that's totally different than everything else that we had. And luckily, the state has a state purchase on those that allows us to be able to do that.
All right, um, I didn't know what work I should give her.
The Bush turf people, they did Dodger Stadium. I don't, I mean, I, I know those folks from Illinois. They're, they're very credible.
Do you think they can make jobs?
Yeah.
Big jobs.
I, I, they've done some really big jobs. I think they, they did Michigan Stadium in a big house when they changed it. It's artificial turf. They put grass in for a soccer game and then they took it all out.
All right, any other discussion on the overall?
Um, we're, I, we're not approving any of the alternates or?
Correct. I have no recommendation to approve the alternates. This is our first project of, uh, seven that we presented. Um, uh, the, the amount of cement, to add the cement, it was, it was way over, uh, the first going to asphalt. That would have been one. Uh, we've already set up the field. If, if, anyway, fundraising or something happens to put that in the in-practice field in, that's, that's, that could, that wouldn't take much to have that happen. Um, that would have been the, really, the other one to add. I'm trying to think what else. Oh, the extended parking lot?
Yeah.
We did not.
And we're not doing synthetic sports turf.
And correct, and we did not go with, uh, regular, or synthetic turf, correct. Yeah.
Now, do we have, do we have to have a compaction study on this field first?
So we've already had the borings done.
We don't have?
We, we already did the borings.
Yeah, I know that, but I don't think we would still have.
Well, when they start doing it, they will do more studies to see what the unsuitable soils, and there's allowances in this already. I think it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand allowance in case we need to do.
You never know.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so their, the unsuitable soil, or the, the boring reports said that there was probably some unsuitable soil. So that's why we accounted for some of the intangible allowance.
Okay.
So Mark, you're wanting motions, each one, the site work, one point one, one point two, one point three, okay?
Yep, so area of motion, second on the one point one. Um, any more discussion on that, second one? Okay, um, all those in favor of the motion for approving one point one, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, one point one passes. Okay, moving on to one point two.
One point two says concrete, but it's, there is some concrete, but it's mostly asphalt for the parking lot. So I just want to make sure, don't, don't confuse the name of the, of the one point, uh, two with concrete.
So does KNE Flatwork do asphalt?
They'd sub it out.
Yep.
Oh, they sub it out, okay.
So they, so, and this is for five hundred and seven thousand. Motion, we are obviously seeking a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So what are we going with here?
Asphalt, KNE.
Is that, so without the alternate?
So it's the only alternate that is the alongside, the tennis courts is not, not added. It's the parking lot, uh, below the, um, or north of the indoor practice facility. And it's the extra spots going just north or south of the softball field. That's an expansion. And then, of course, all the concrete new works that are around the...
So south of the softball field and?
And then right out here.
The north one will be?
Yes, that's done, yeah. It's only the, there's a, there was an alternate strip along the east side of the tennis courts.
Yeah.
We, we're not doing that.
Okay, but what's the, what is the north parking lot concrete, seventy-four thousand with KNE?
So that'd be concrete. It blew up asphalt.
Okay.
So right now, the parking lots are asphalt, the parking lot.
And southeast would be?
The one next to the tennis courts.
Okay.
Okay, just clarification.
Any more discussion on that? Right, all those in favor of, uh, approving the mo, or the, of the motion to approve one point two, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, one point two passes. On to one point three.
One point three, masonry. This is a Orsby Masonry contractor, uh, for two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars, so recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Have we worked with them before? Those names sound familiar to me on any bids that we've had.
Uh, they did the North Scott Auditorium pretty good.
Orsby?
Yeah.
Orsby, okay.
There you go.
I had the same question, Molly.
Still sound familiar.
Yeah, they, uh, they worked with us on the...
Under the same name or?
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, they did work at, um, Bedore Schools, too, and they worked with them, you know?
Masonry is kind of a dying trade, so it's kind of hard to find people that want to do that. All right. Any discussion more on one point three? Okay, all those favor, uh, the approved motion for one point three, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, one point three passes on to one point four.
All right, package one point four, general trades. It's supposed to bill Bruce Builders for eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, and look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can you just talk about what's in those, what's in the general trades?
Sure. So, um, you got your steel, rational with the steel. Um, there is the fencing around the whole site, the athletic, uh, sports, like the, the Gold Coast, the, not Gold Coast, softball coast. But all your specialties, um, the painting scope, there's a little bit of drywall, the concession stand, um, overhead doors, because they stand kind of a miscellaneous, smaller item.
Like vertical construction type stuff. Yeah, that's right. And in the past, we've had CM Russell got the, uh, uh, general trades on the auditorium. Is that Bush? Or Bush did, I'm sorry, Bush got the general trades on the auditorium. It is unusual that this, that was the one question I asked that day was, is, he was expecting two more coming in. And that, those are the ones that didn't come in. If you'd like to see, obviously, he's our CM, you'd like to see a bidder up against him in case. But we, we were assuming that they would have gotten.
I mean, it's twenty-five percent of the bid, so it's a significant amount, though.
Yep, yeah. So that's why I asked that question that day.
Any other discussion on the general trades contract? Okay, all those in favor of, uh, the approved motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
But that, that will be spelled out clearly what it's in, in each of those general trades, so like it has.
Yeah.
And that's what everything's bid to on each of the package, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to one point five, the bleachers.
Uh, that is for Townsend Company for special construction for a hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. And a motion to approve is, is recommended.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any, uh, discussion on the bleachers?
How many are we looking at seating for those? You don't have to.
Didn't we talk like?
I was going to say seven hundred is the number.
I was going to say eight hundred, so.
In my, my head.
What do we currently have at a softball or baseball?
It's more than we currently have, but I can get that, uh, get that answer to, to you guys and send out tomorrow.
Either three fifty or maybe as high as five with the current one, right? I know we bumped it up quite a bit.
What you think about seven fifty? I, I believe it's a seven hundred, yeah.
And this one also has the, um, handicap access, I think, too, so.
Because there's less around, there's not going to be any, all that seating.
Correct, there's not a lot of outs, outfield seats.
People in the pitch.
People have all the seats after the goal, and they have.
Yes.
For your bleacher seats.
Water detention.
Launchers and all brands.
Hey, can we do the thing like they do out in San Francisco where they have like the little floaties out?
Yeah, we get the public pulled in.
Cubic Co. Cubic Co.
Yeah.
All right, we digress. Big time. Uh, so motion is second on one point five. Uh, all those in favor of, of approving, approving the motion?
Aye.
All right, all right. Those opposed? All right, now it passes. Now on to one point six.
One point six is the Hometown Mechanical, uh, for a hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars, uh, recommending approval.
Why did Peterson, what happened there?
Uh, um, Peterson withdrew theirs because they missed half of the spec that had to be bidded out.
Oh.
Uh, and so we allowed them to withdraw. Peterson does a lot of work for us and does a lot of great work for us. And, uh, and so we allowed them to withdraw their, their bid.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, any more discussions? Okay, uh, all those in favor of the, the approved motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Can I ask one question? Sorry, the, the, they're so close, how did you just say a hundred and fifty bucks?
Uh, because they, basically, they have the complete scope, went through it, and they have bid time worth low, so.
Well, they had complete scope, or Crawford was missing something, or?
No, Crawford had complete scope, but since Hometown was your, your low.
Low.
Um, by state law, you basically have to go with the low then.
Did Hometown have the entire complete, it's just a Crawford bid?
Yep.
Would that would be the estimator on that one?
Well, a hundred and fifty bucks is, a hundred and fifty-two, so.
Yeah.
That makes it tough. All right, so we approved one point six, correct? All right, now on to one point seven, the electrical one.
American Electric, uh, um, they had a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, so we look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the electrical portion?
Big difference in the bid and a hundred grand?
Wasn't complete, wasn't it?
No, it was definitely.
Both of them were?
Yeah.
What was the, what part of it was?
Just their higher?
Outlining.
American Electric.
Their scope was the back.
Same, same.
So what's your, I guess, what Molly's getting at, what's your conjecture on what, what's the reason for the delay?
Um, you know, American Electric's here in Eldridge. I think they wanted to, they wanted the job real bad being in town. Uh, they also helped us with our budget, so they, they knew from the beginning. Um, so I think they just went aggressive after it. And I can't speak on how busy the other company is, you know, if they, they just bid it to, to see if they could get it. But, uh, I think it was more of a, be local and, and like the job. But I'm, I'm confident that American like it has everything. I mean, they, they helped us with the budget from day one, so.
I just, there's people from both, both companies probably that are involved, right? We have people that are heavily involved in the design and lots of things from both companies, so.
You have a motion, a second, approve this one? All right, any more discussion on this? Right, all those in favor of approving the electrical to American Electric, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now it passes. Now on to the last one, one point eight, the turf package.
Yep, the turf package, Bush Sports Turf for four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the grass contract? All right, uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. It's exciting to serve first.
First of the seven.
First of the seven out of shoot, so. Should be playing softball by somewhere at twenty-four.
Question on the total construction. What are the design fees and the surveying and is there a reason they're not, are they somewhere else?
Um, yeah, I don't have them, but that, we had that as a, a contract prior to this with, with Leggett.
Okay.
So we've been paying those as we've gone along.
Okay, if we can include it, then it reflects the entire cost.
Cost.
Yeah. Otherwise, we have to piece together.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi, Bill. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, super test report?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is just to, to, um, piggyback on this, is after the first year, we'll get the next, uh, four committees started. And so when we get back, those will, we'll start having those meetings as the design for those next four projects. And so just to give you a heads up on that. Central office during break is by appointment only. A lot of vacation is used during that time. And so it's easier if people call in to let us know. We'll make sure somebody's here if somebody needs to come to central office. Um, I was going to say John and I were heading tomorrow to meet the governor, but that got canceled, uh, today, so.
Rescheduled.
We'll have to get rescheduled, so, um, they will hopefully contact us back. Um, and then tomorrow's an early out and, uh, start our winter break. And hopefully, just in time, we'll be out before the storm, snow, snow, snowstorm comes. And so saves us a, missing a day of school.
Won't have to be, no closed show.
Yeah, won't have to be. I like them when they come on weekends and on breaks, so it's perfect for me, so.
Day on the Hill is the fourteenth of February.
Day on the Hill is fourteenth. Uh, Bernie and Heather will be going to that. I'm actually heading to the national conference on that day. Um, so I will not be able to attend to, uh, do it. We do have a AA Day on the Hill, uh, that's going to be coming up for super attendance. So I'll be out there for that, too. So, yeah, make sure, pencil that in on your calendars and let Trina know if you can go. We'll get everybody registered. But that's all I have.
Before any year-end charge and recheck, look?
Happy New Year.
All right, uh, moving on to board comments or correspondence. I do want, before we get into that, I do want to recognize the FFA for our annual fruit baskets. Thank you very much. Uh, so I see, Joe, um, you somehow got one different than the rest of us.
Yes.
As in bigger.
The whole office.
Oh, I have an office. You don't take that home.
I didn't see that. I didn't see that. I'm glad you guys pointed that out.
Joe made note of that.
Good call.
Yeah, exactly.
Good thing I said something.
Joe shared, Joe.
I, I want to thank John for having the, um, get together for the board.
Yeah, thank you very much.
It's fun.
That's very fun.
Don't even want to hear about the game, so. And everybody have a wonderful holiday season, time.
I wanted to thank Tracy. We got to judge doors at Shepherd today, different Christmas doors. And it was, it was a lot of fun and a lot of, a lot of neat creative ideas on how to decorate a door. That was.
We had like twelve times ago since you guys did that.
Hey, I was impressed.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It was, and then it was scheduled and I'm so sorry that I did that to you guys.
It was hard to decide.
Me and technology don't make.
I bet you didn't get into the texture and all that other stuff that we did.
No, we had a professional category and it's amazing.
We really.
Contrast and everything.
Who did it? Actually, did the teacher or the kids?
That's what we, that's what we do.
That, that we did judge on, but we didn't judge. That, that we did judge on, but we didn't judge on texture, I'll tell you. That would have gotten by me in real fast.
Creativity and all of that, I'd say.
All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.